Not used to feel being over there. Even though I put you over there.
I'm not even being over here either.
Huh?
I'm not, I didn't.
I know. Just, I just shaking things up, getting people out of their comfort zone.
She is, but she's texting me. Phil Rodney, your screen is still showing up on the broadcast. Yeah, if it doesn't mess you up too bad. Okay. Yeah.
Mayor Swobly?
Yes.
I can make this request during the meeting, but is it possible to move up the last item for DEI earlier into the agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna do that, I just haven't quite figured out when and where, but yes.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Candy, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. We'll begin. It is Tuesday, May 23rd of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council, and the first item would be the roll call, Candy.
Okay, Peyton. Kylie.
Here.
Hersch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Magaki.
Here.
Biaski. Reeves.
Here.
Here Lucky.
Here.
Did I hear it here?
Here.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Schumacher.
Here.
Okay, we have nine Alders present, Canagus and Raffar absent in the queue.
And Caravello's here, too.
Oh dear, my apologies, I missed that one. Thank you.
All right.
We put you on that side of the room and they keep looking for guys.
We do have a quorum, excellent. We are certified in compliance with open meeting laws. We do have a few things on here. I didn't see anybody signed up for the public hearing. So I think I'm just gonna skip that for now and go into a couple other things. Public comment period, I did not have anybody set up, signed up for public comment. So we'll go right into communications. Are there any communications from Alders?
I guess I just would like to thank the chamber and all the volunteers, including Brett and his wife, for putting on a fantastic set, and I and all the community members that volunteered and got good food and good music and lots of fun. So thank you all, what a great community effort.
Are there any other communications?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a quick reminder, if you don't have anything to do on Saturday, June 3rd, or even if you do have something to do. From 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM.
Can you repeat that? You cut out for just a moment, just when it was getting good.
Yeah. June Pride at the library, sponsored by the library and friends of the library. East Side Park, Saturday, June 3rd, 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. Drop in for any of the events.
All right, thank you. Any other communications from Alders? And I have a couple communications. First of all, I wanted to share that I was selected to serve on the Executive Board for the Dane County Cities and Villages Association by my peers, which is two extra meetings a year, is what I've been told. I have my doubts about that, we know, all know how this goes. But the good news is, is it'll give us more representation, especially on statewide issues, so I'm excited about that. I have spent a couple days at the Capitol, including today, and, you know, we're still pretty optimistic that some form of increased share revenue will go through. So I shared that with Finance Committee, and I'll give you an update as we go along. There's quite a few measures being tossed around in the budget to try to increase economic development, especially in underutilized buildings on Main Street. We have a few of them. So I offered some suggestions on how I felt they might get more participation. And there's some other things regarding affordable housing that is in there, and then some other things that you might hear about, they call them innovation incentives, where they're trying to, they're trying to get cities and villages and townships and counties to work more closely together on shared services. So you might hear a little bit more about that. What happened during this budget cycle that's a lot different than what's happened in the past is the Cities and Villages, which I mentioned, is one of our trade organizations. Another one is the League of Municipalities, they're a statewide organization. And then there's also, there's the townships that have their own organizations. So the three came together to try to make a unified request to address the shared revenue challenge that we all have for staffing, especially. You know, in the budget, what they're trying to do is really address public safety, police, fire, EMS, and public works. We have staffing needs in all them areas, so we feel that certainly for us, that would be an improvement if the budget goes through and the governor ultimately signs it. So stay tuned on that one. The other thing I wanted to share is that three of us attended a meeting last week from some folks that are concerned about our water project, riverfront project, and specifically the dam modification. And you certainly may get some communication from folks that have issues. If you do, feel free to reach out to myself or Director Dan Glynn, and we can make sure that you guys will continue to have the most up-to-date and accurate information available. There has been a lot of misinformation put out there in the past. That kind of comes with the territory when we serve. We certainly try to provide you with all the accurate information we can, so ultimately you guys can make educated decisions on all issues, and we'll continue to do so. That's all I had. Any other communications? We'll move right into the agenda then. The consent agenda has a few items in there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Reeves, is there a second?
Sir, come. Take your pick, Greg or me.
Second by Alder Jensen. Would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, this is the point of the meeting where we jump around. Okay? All right, so we do have a presentation. Katrina Becker is here, and I'll try to cue you up here.
Sorry, you're hiding behind the podium, we couldn't see you, like, is she here, is she here? I just saw your eyebrows up.
All right, hopefully I have the most recent one here. All right, so Katrina, go ahead and you can kind of introduce yourself, and just give me the signal when you want me to advance the slide. That's the first one. There it is. Okay.
All right, thank you. I'm the Executive Director of Innovation Center Stoughton. We are a pretty new organization. I was brought on as Executive Director, just as part-time contract role, starting January 1st. And we've gotten a lot of momentum, and we're excited to move forward with it. And yeah, so I'll just jump right in, you can go to the next slide. So is everyone familiar with the Fab Lab in Stoughton High School? Probably. So the idea for Innovation Center Stoughton really came from seeing the success of the Fab Lab and wanting to bring the experience that students got or gained going through Fab Lab classes, where they learn how to design something on a computer, and then they bring it to life through a 3D printer, laser cutter, CNC machine, or other equipment. And really wanting to bring that learning, that skill development, and opportunity to make and create to the broader community, both to individuals and entrepreneurs and businesses. And it's kind of twofold as well, wanting to also use it to help address some of the broader workforce and economic challenges faced by local companies here and kind of the region as a whole. You can go to the next slide. So really, why this is needed. So helping to grow skills and keep ideas and grow ideas here locally leads to job creation, higher wages, and overall a more vibrant community and higher standard of living. And then also technological advancement is really rapidly changing how we think about and experience work. And then also creativity, new ways of thinking, and new ideas are really critical to keeping up with this changing world of work. Yet, it's really hard to kind of step away from the day-to-day job or running a business to take time to be creative and come up with new ideas, and then actually figure out how to implement, implement them. So, now you can go to the next slide. So what we aim to do with Innovation Center Stoughton is, really kind of falls in these four buckets. So we aim to help individuals and organizations conceptualize, prototype, incubate, and grow their ideas. So I'll explain a little bit about our specific programs that we're launching with, but we really want to eventually have programs and resources that kind of fall into each of these areas. You can go to the next slide. So we have a seven-member board currently, and we were really intentional about wanting the board to be, or wanting the organization to really be kind of a collaboration, a community collaboration between the city, the school district, and the business community, and local citizens. So that's represented in our board. And then our financial supporters so far are the Wallyn Foundation, City of Stoughton, and then April Air. You can go to the next slide. So in doing some research on, you know, what kind of factors lead to or contribute to innovation, one thing that kind of came through is, is this phrase that we're, that we came up with, called open source thinking. And so really what we mean when we say this is, it means kind of creating a, also what we're calling permission-positive environment. So really just an environment where people are comfortable coming up with and exploring their ideas, sharing their ideas with others, an environment where there are really no wrong answers, and where failure is really just more learning. And then really this embracing knowledge sharing and collaboration. You can go to the next slide. And so I would say oftentimes, we can be intimidated or overwhelmed by the idea of innovation, because it might feel like, you know, totally new technology, that we don't know what exactly it is or how to use it, like AI and chat GTP and stuff. Or a whole new way of doing something that, that just, you know, might change everything. But I would say, in reality, innovation is often incremental, and it really just builds on and improves existing, existing products, existing processes or structures. And I would say it's also something that humans have been doing forever. And so just to kind of highlight this point, I wanted to show a little timeline of some examples of innovation in Stoughton's history. So I'll just mention a few of them, but there are many more. So one is in 1853, the Passenger Railroad actually connected Stoughton and Milwaukee months before it went from Madison to Milwaukee, which I think is pretty cool. Stoughton was with Mant Waggons and other wagon companies. Stoughton was really a leader in the wagon industry. And then that kind of evolved into being leaders in the trailer and engine and automobile industries. And then another highlight is a few kind of, so we have, here in Stone, we have big, big companies that employ a lot of people, that are kind of innovator, innovators in their own industries. And then we also have some small startups, which you may or may not be familiar with, but one is called The Virtual Foundry, which manufactures metal filament for 3D printing. And this is actually used in research all over the world. People from all over the world buy, buy this metal filament that's made right here in Stoughton for different 3D printing research. And then Broodminder is another example of just someone who's created sensors to monitor the health of beehives. And then I believe he's also working on a National Institute of Health grant, doing some really cool stuff as well. So there are a lot of other kind of innovative thinkers and people right here in the community. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so the first three programs that we are piloting. So we're, we're kind of launching with these three pilot programs to, to try them out, see what works, and then, you know, we're expecting to kind of iterate and take feedback and, and make changes as we go. We also want to eventually have a physical space and location, but before we get to that point, we really need to try out some programming and determine what our space needs will be. So these three programs, the first one is our Guided Whiteboard. So this is a workshop for, we're thinking four to 10 people, where we use structured ideation tools and kind of go through a design thinking process to help teams really define a problem that they want to solve, and then go through some brainstorming and honing in on executable solutions. And then we're thinking this also might be partnered with our Fab Lab workshops. So we're working on establishing an agreement with the school district for using the Fab Lab to then kind of be able to actually physically prototype something, if, if that is what the solution calls for. So kind of combining those two, create creativity and kind of getting participants to think creatively and come up with solutions. And then our third program is our Entrepreneurs Group. And so this is really about connecting and providing entrepreneurs and makers with, and small business owners, connecting them with each other, and then also connecting them with mentors and other resources that they might need to help them either start or grow their business. And then I mentioned the Fab Lab workshops, but again, working with the school district to utilize the Fab Lab equipment and space and kind of expand on that programming, whether it's for entrepreneurs specifically, or other individuals in the community that would like to use that equipment or learn how to use it, and go through workshops like that. And one other thing I wanted to mention, kind of tying back into the, one of the slides about why it's needed, and this shift to work being more kind of focused on skills, tangible skills versus like long-term jobs or careers. And so another partnership that we're exploring is partnering with Madison College to establish some digital or micro credentialing programs. So that's really where, say, if someone comes in, goes through one of our trainings to learn how to use a 3D printer, they can then get this micro or digital credential that says, hey, I know you, I know how to use and run a 3D printer. And then that, you know, eventually they could go work at a company where the company sees that, and it's kind of a verified credential by Madison College or through the Innovation Center that they can use in future jobs. So just wanted to point that out as well. Yeah, so, and then you can go to the next slide. And I think the next one is just, yeah, kind of last one. But basically, right now, you know, we're, like I said, we're piloting a few of our guided whiteboard workshops, working on an agreement for use of the Fab Lab, and then looking to connect with entrepreneurs, makers, small business owners, and then collaboration partners are what we're calling kind of our business mentors and people who provide expertise and services to businesses, like accountants, you know, attorneys, marketing professionals, things like that. So we're kind of looking to recruit some of those. And any, anyone else from a community organization or an individual that has, you know, ideas for how we could partner, open to that as well. So that's kind of an update on where we're at right now. Let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions from Alders? Go ahead, Alder Schumacher.
Katrina, you know, I know I've seen your, your presentation a couple of times now. I got one thing, based on like your, the Fab Lab workshops and, and things that are related to that. I think there could even be one more that would be closer to even the root of that, would be to get people like a little bit of experience and know-how on doing, working with like 3D CAD drawing programs. Because I think that that one's like at the base of just about anything that you're proposing in there. A lot of those programs at Madison College or universities are fairly expensive, and a lot of them work, are only using like Autodesk, or they're, they're using the really expensive CAD programs. But maybe some kind of like shorter classes or video series or something that work with, maybe some of the less expensive ones, SolidWorks, or Libre, or a number of those other ones, I think would be very helpful for people and give them a foundation to be able to branch off into these other more specialized things with printing and fabricating.
Yeah. Thank you. And another thing also that we're thinking about and working on is this idea of, kind of related to that actually, is doing almost, having some like knowledge sharing events, or whether it's a more formal kind of class. But there is, there are so many people right here in Stoughton and in the area that have knowledge of, you know, programs like that, or are former engineers, or, you know, experienced entrepreneurs or whatnot, that might be willing to come and give a talk about, you know, their experience using, using one of these programs and what they've learned, and trying to figure out what are unique, like, because the other thing is, we don't want to duplicate things that are already out there and things that already exist. And so finding what we can offer that's unique and of value to the community. So if it's, you know, a class on some of these programs, but also given by someone that is experienced and kind of tailored to what it's going to be used for, or something like that, I think could be really cool, too. So, thank you.
Sure.
And those are, those are all good. I've found at least within, with, within that schedule of things, that actually working with the printers, you know, vinyl cutters, CNCs, all of that, the machinery is actually fairly simple to operate. The, the most difficult part, I think, or at least where the most intimidation comes from, is in that CAD CAM software, and, and actually getting the instructions into the machines.
Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know, I mean, I work with, with Libre at home, and that has an enormously steep learning curve to use it effectively.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have an instructor we didn't.
I know, I'm like, I'm gonna be reaching out to you.
Any other questions for Katrina? Certainly, you know, the board appreciates the, the ARPA money that was designated to help get this thing off the ground. So I think the purpose was just to give the council an update of where we're at as a group and where we think we're gonna go, and certainly, as you can see, we're open for suggestions. All right, well, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for your support.
All right, well, head into the agenda here. We're gonna jump ahead and knock out a few things, and then we'll come back. So we're gonna start at number, um, number 22, which came from Finance Committee earlier tonight, that's R87. And I'll get that one up on the screen for Alder Person Schumacher. R87.
R87, 2023, is a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Payne and Dolan for the Virgin Lake Trail construction project. So move.
Second.
Second by Alder Jensen, Alder Person Schumacher.
Talked about this at Finance earlier, and agreed unanimously on this one. This is to get the, or start working on the Virgin Lakes Trail reconstruction, as the resolution states. The bid had come in a little bit under what, what the budgeting was. I think Director Glynn said about $55,000 less than, than the budget, and they anticipate to begin this construction in July, if we so approve it.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Glynn?
No, Brett covered it pretty good, actually.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thanks for being here, Dan. Next item is R88 of 2023. This one's coming from the Personnel Committee, which I believe is Alder Person Reeves.
There we go. Resolution 88, 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the termination of the COVID pandemic policy, and I would move for approval.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Peyton, that's over there. All right, we'll get you on the scorecard here, Alder Person Reeves.
Let me, so there was one correction, just a typo on the second whereas, the date should actually be May, the committee met on May 3rd of 2023 to consider the termination. And we had, the council had approved a resolution back in 2021, and that was related to the COVID pandemic policy, which the primary, one of the primary things was to cover employees' time off for quarantine. And there were some parameters surrounding that. And people, if they met those qualifications, did not need to use their vacation time or sick time. But since the pandemic has, the health emergency has ended, we met and the recommendation was that we can go ahead and terminate the COVID pandemic policy. And Director Gillingham is here, if there's anything you'd like to add or questions for her.
You just have to push the button so the red light comes on.
No, I think Lisa did a good job. The only thing is, the public emergency ended on May 11th. Therefore, we felt that this was timely to go ahead and expire our policy.
And I would just add, you know, I'd like to thank Director Gillingham and Personnel Committee and Council for kind of helping us through all that. Those were difficult times, and we were making these decisions on the fly to try to protect our employees and balance providing the services to the community. And certainly, this is one of many actions that this body took to support us.
Alder Person Schumacher.
We certainly hope we don't have to dust these off again for another 100 years.
Can we go 200 years?
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? That motion carries. Next item was at Finance Committee earlier tonight, and that is R89 of 2023. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R89 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget to approve ARPA funds for Stoughton Juneteenth event. So moved.
Second. Second by Caraballo. Alder Person Schumacher.
In our discussions in the Finance Committee on that, one adjustment that we would have to make in there, we made it in the committee. The actual fiscal impact would be ARPA funds up to $2,000 versus the $1,000. That's in the header of that one.
Okay, and we do have some, some members of the community that are organizing the event here tonight. If you'd like to come up and speak, you're welcome to do so. And you just have to push the button so the red comes on the microphone. Maybe tell us a little bit about your event and why you're requesting the funds.
Good evening, Sarah Esman. Here's my neighbor.
And Sharon Bartlett.
We are part of a team of 12 neighbors coordinating the Juneteenth event to happen at Rotary Park on the 18th. Just had a planning meeting tonight, our fourth, and we were joined by a representative from the Wisconsin Veterans Museum, and are glad to know that they'll be providing some historical content during the event to help people understand what Juneteenth is and why it's important. And it's planned to be a three-hour event with a lot of different activities for families. Happy to field questions. A bouncy house will be there. I know the mayor's gonna be excited about that. So happy to field questions if you have them.
And just a couple clerical things. The resolution does say a thousand dollars, but you're asking for up to 2,000, right?
That would be delightful.
Okay, so we would adjust that. I think that's what the motion was.
Do we wanna, do we wanna run it in an amendment to it officially?
I think if we just recognized during the motion that it went up to 2,000, the clerk can change that. Other questions from Alders?
Sure, I have a question for you guys, and thank you for getting together and putting this on. It's a very important event, and I'm glad you're spearheading it and not letting it go to the wayside. With respect to your budget, it says, if we give you $2,000, but it says in there that you would be doing fundraising letters, is that for next year? Or is that still for this year? And how are you planning to make this sustainable going forward?
To build on the Finance Committee meeting a little bit earlier, there were two pieces that I shared that helped address that. The first is for this year, we anticipate the final cost of the event coming in at well over $2,000. For example, if we estimate 100 people, which seems reasonable based on past years and from what Yolabeth has shared in the past, if we anticipate approximately $10 per person for food, that right there is $1,000. A second piece of that would be entertainers, performers, dancers, hip-hop artists, spoken word, poetry, et cetera. The asking prices for some of these individuals ranges from $200 and on up. So we anticipate that this year, the $2,000 that we're asking for would help to free the costs, but would not cover all of them. So the additional fundraising would be to help with those additional costs. But we are trying to be mindful about this being something sustainable, and as much as possible, taking the resources and the knowledge and carrying that into subsequent years. For example, Yolabeth had a good suggestion. Maybe it was Mia Croyle. I'd have to double-check the source. But that we make signs that not have the date so that we can maybe add with a erasable marker, for example, the dates for this year, but we can reuse them for subsequent years, for example. And we've been fortunate to have a number of people on the sort of Planning Committee, the de facto Planning Committee, who have various kinds of expertise, who have helpfully shared some of these things and mailing lists that they've generated and suggestions. And we're trying hard to curate all of that and retain all of that so that we can go back to this and hopefully save ourselves some, some legwork next time.
Any follow-up? Okay, Eddie, Alder Schumacher.
I'd say instead of doing a dry erase board on your signs, I would have one with, I would use just a two-part magnet thing, and then just stick them, stick them together through, through your sign. Because I've tried to put things on dry erase, and then it rains on them, and then it's not, not a good thing, so.
Good suggestion, thank you.
The magnet would be easier, and then you can just change it however you want to.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from anyone else about the event? Anybody out on Zoom have any questions or comments? Pretty quiet out there tonight. Alder Person Pete.
So this is my first time of hearing of the event happening in Stoughton. So I'm curious, you're a group of neighbors in that neighborhood by Rotary Park? No? Across the city?
Throughout the city.
Okay. Considering it's a DEI initiative, what are the composition of leaders that you have within the group to help be representative when talking about Juneteenth?
So we have two African-American participants on the planning team. One of them is a student who designed the artwork for the project. And we're also making a concerted effort to reach performers and artists that would be appropriate. And we have one business owner also who is African-American. But tonight's conversation with the Historia, the, the Veterans Museum, I think was super useful to address the need for clear, accessible information about what the history of this event is and also Wisconsin's role in it. So, does that help answer your question?
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
There are two other details that I would add. One is that even though Itty Bitty Bookstore, to my understanding, is no longer open as like a brick and mortar location, the owner is still a part of the community. She's had books for sale at places like Dune Downtown. We've talked about having a raffle and inviting people to have a booth to drum up business for themselves. And we would like to reach out to her and hopefully get her collaboration. Another thought that we had was to make some books available, for example, kids' books, and we would try to source them from her first, if possible. And I've emailed the owner of, I'm not sure what his company is, but Ben Palagio. I'd have to double-check the spelling of his name. His business is downtown in Kaganza Plaza, and his business is African Safaris. He may be from the African diaspora, I'm not positive, but he is African-American or black. And these are, we're aware that there are, you know, several people in the community who may be interested. We have certainly tried to reach out to them, but we're also understanding that people's time limits are, you know, what they are as well.
Of course. I was just curious because of, we want to be representative, allyship is important, the intersections of different people's identities and how they converge in an event like this. So I'm just making sure that, like, we're doing everyone a service with it. So I appreciate that.
So far, it's all ladies on the planning team, just saying.
I have another question. How are you gonna advertise this to make sure that the community that we're celebrating feels welcome and knows about it? That's question number one. And two, have you thought about also partnering with the youth center to have those participants in the youth center help co-create this event?
We have thought about the collaboration with the youth center. I can't speak for certain if there's been a contact yet. There has been very careful intention with each of our discussions about how to reach different parts of the city and different neighbors. Our hope is to eventually have this located in a more centralized, or, or move it around the city, I guess I should say. Rotary Park is pretty centralized, but move it around a little bit to make it accessible by walk for, for more people. As far as marketing, the fundraising letters and sponsorship letters went out this week, the first round of them. And making good use of social media, both locally through contacts here, but also Madison 365 and Madison Magazine and other, other features like that. We've also contacted McFarland and Oregon City Offices to determine what they're doing, if anything, for Juneteenth, and whether they'd like to collaborate with us, and there's been a lot of receptivity there. Is there other things to add?
Two other pieces I would also add is, an idea we were working on would be, particularly businesses in the downtown that have storefronts, do they already feature products or services that were created by people of color? And could they create some kind of visible front? Like in a window or at the front of their shop, for example, that wouldn't require them to add anything necessarily. It would just be bringing together resources that are already part of their business in more invisible location. And ideally, that would be as soon as possible so that that visibility is generated throughout the month and then in the days leading up to the event itself. Kind of in the same vein, the library, the director and the associate director are very much engaged in this. The Director of Children's Services is also a big proponent, and they are helping coordinate with us some resources that they have to make this visible. For example, there are a number of big panels. I believe they're portraits of women who have been influential in STEM, who happen to be African-American or from other diverse backgrounds. They were on display, I believe it was last year. So identifying, are there ESOS? How many do we have? How many panels do we have access to? What would be a segment of the library where we could have those on display? They're doing a major event June 3rd with Gay Pride as, older man Lagaki, older person, excuse me, Lagaki had just mentioned. But ideally, after they've had the chance to pivot from that, then they would use some of their internal resources to showcase this and help spread the word in the community and also spread the word about the event itself. So those are just a couple of small, small resources that we're leveraging. I'm on the library board, as is Jean Lagaki, so trying to begin with who we know, what we know, and hopefully it'll snowball beyond as well.
Any other questions or comments from Alders?
Mayor?
Alder Person Lagaki, go ahead.
Thank you guys for taking time to listen. This has been an extraordinary group of neighbors who during this transitional time when the DEI task force is transitioning to our new consultant and project manager. We do actually have some amazing project managers already in this group of neighbors who are trying to lead this and hold this forward. This was originally led by Eyes of Hope, Mosea Coast, Families for Equity, and it's, this is, this is a lot to do, and I am amazed, and I encourage you to vote for this. This is a crucial event for us to put our money behind our beliefs and equity for us all.
All right, thank you. So we have a, a motion. Those in favor, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Thank you both for being here tonight. I know you're busy.
Thank you.
Trying to plan for it. Okay, we're gonna go in reverse. We're gonna go to item number nine, which is the Bickley Court. So this one was at the Finance Committee earlier tonight. So we'll queue this one up for Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R80 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing and directing proper city officials to enter into an agreement with BKS Excavating Incorporated of Edgerton, Wisconsin for the 2023 Bickley Court Reconstruction Project Contract 4-2023. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
This was, we had to split this out of the Bickley Court and North Street project. So this one was, was bid out separately and thankfully had come in a little bit below the budget amount on there. And then we'll handle the, the North Street portion of it that got left at a later date.
Anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Just wanted to highlight, we did receive five competitive bids on this project, which was actually quite surprising at the time that we bid it. I think the smaller scale helped us have a few different bidders that we normally don't see, so that was encouraging. But we are anxious to move forward with this, this project as it was pushed back from a previous year already.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, number 10. The next three are first readings, and they all came from the Planning Commission. So Alder Person Caraballo, can you introduce these?
I sure can. This is first reading of ordinance 15 of 2023. And this is a planned development, general development plan for 2605 Cromwell Court, Lot 27, and a portion of 2500 Jackson Street, which is referred to as Lot 15 of Kettle Park West, Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I, well, since it's a first reading, it's a first reading.
All right, and then Director Scheel can maybe fill in some blanks. And then we do have a representative here from Forward Development Group as well. Do you want me to continue sharing, or do you want?
I was gonna share just an overview exhibit.
All right, I'll stop my share here for you while you're setting up.
I think I'm all squared away here.
Yep, it's there.
Okay, just a quick introduction is, is this concept has been before the committee, or the commission as well as the council. This would consolidate two parcels, the back portion of the property that was, or is currently part of the True by Hilton, and the Cromwell Court parcel on the northern part of the screen. They'll be combined into one parcel as part of the ultimate certified survey map and combination into a single parcel. The GDP that's presented tonight as a first reading would allow for up to 117 units. The resolution that's in your, the ordinance actually is proposed or drafted is in your packet. I was just gonna highlight a couple aspects of it. One of the aspects of it is, there's language in there that relates to trying to obtain additional parkland for the units that are in addition to what was already prescribed or approved for this lot in a parcel separate from this, maybe an expansion of the area to the west where we have some parkland that we have already acquired for future parkland associated with the Kettle Park West area. So that's one aspect of the, of the ordinance as drafted. And included in your packet is also the, or included in the resolution are the, I'll call them, they're called flexibilities related to it, and related to the setback and the number of units and the allowance of more than a single building to be built on the site. I'm gonna go to the, the actual ordinance so I can highlight those. So the four, four flexibilities would allow for the multiple buildings on a single lot, the minimum landscape surface ratio of 30% versus the 50%, which is typical, and the minimum building rear yard setback of 25 feet as opposed to 50. I also mentioned that we'd allow for, this would allow for greater than 12 units per building. The exhibit that I'd like to show now is actually something that was recently provided by the Developer Group, and Conner Net, I think, is here if you'd like to explain it. But I think it tries to illustrate the adjacent areas of both open space and/or trail access as well as the setback component to that. Is Conner here? Just push the button and get the red light.
Great. All right, thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. I'm Conner Net with Forward Development Group, and I'm excited to talk about this a little bit more. I'll, I'll get back to this diagram in a, in a minute. But really wanted to focus on several items that has changed since this was presented to you last in February, taking that feedback into effect, as well as the feedback we received in May, early May, from Plan Commission. And we really wanted to focus on three main points. The, the exceptions that were just highlighted. The, the exceptions that were just highlighted, the site access and the traffic study that was commissioned for the project based on feedback we received, and then the previously proposed conference center that is, you know, now the multifamily project we see here. As it relates to the planned development for the project, based on feedback we received from staff and council, we reduced the density. We are prior over to MR 24 at 140 units, and now we're conforming with MR 24 zoning, which with a maximum 117 units. The current concept plan has 96 units in it. When we're looking at using greater than 12 dwelling units per building, that's largely driven by construction cost. Building more than 12 units within a building helps efficiencies and create more affordable construction processes. Multiple primary structures, this is largely to avoid large, overly large buildings on the site that would not, not complement the single-family neighborhood to the northwest. So this, we feel this matches the context better. Reducing the landscape area, this is, the current concept plan is at 41%. The previous zoning and stormwater design is based on MR 10 zoning and planned business zoning, which has a mixed landscape ratio of 38%. So on the concept plan, we're still above that number. And the, the reason to go down to 30 is just to provide buffer as we go through specific implementation. And we'd make sure that any stormwater design does not negatively impact the overall stormwater system. And then this diagram, as it relates to the setback reduction of 25 feet from 50 to 25 feet, it's a uniquely shaped parcel. So reducing the 25-foot setback helps us accommodate site circulation and the, the buildings within the site. But also, the site has several contextual open spaces, not necessarily for recreation, but green spaces nonetheless. The infiltration basin to the north in the darker green, the 30-foot easement for stormwater drainage on the right side of the site. And then on the left side of the site, there's the outlot with trail. So between the, the current, the proposed setbacks of 25 feet, we feel that this respects the, the context of the site. Moving to the traffic study, based on feedback we received, we commissioned a traffic study to, to show that this would not negatively impact traffic on the site or in the surrounding neighborhood. KL Engineers found that the proposed zoning would generate between 20 and 35% less traffic compared to MR 10 zoning in the proposed convention center. This would create a more consistent traffic volume when compared to the convention center. And the single access point off of Cromwell Court for this site, based on this density, is suitable. We added a emergency egress lane connecting to the True Hotel based on fire department's feedback. That would be controlled by barrier gates. That way residents wouldn't be allowed to use that. And then finally, the convention center, which is an important item. After reviewing the pro forma, looking at the convention center, like most convention centers, do not generate income, so it'd need to be supplemented by additional hotel rooms. And currently, with business travel struggling to, it does not support having additional hotel rooms within the hotel, which would negatively impact the, the hotel by having the convention center. The market has also changed since the original commission for the, for the hotel. And although beautiful event centers such as Fuel Reserve and Lagarette support the hotel on the weekend, those are great venues that would also detract from potential events to the convention center. But largely, it comes to needing the additional, the convention center itself not standing on its own and needing additional hotel rooms, which isn't supported under the current rentals that we're getting at the hotel. So in conclusion, we're, we're excited about this project. We think that the additional multifamily adds a diversity of housing types within the Kettle Park West neighborhood, and we're happy to take any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you. President Hirsch, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few questions, not I'm planning to. And so, one, so the main route in is the Cromwell Court, right? Okay. The other thing is, for each of these buildings, how many, and for each of these apartments, how many parking spaces are you looking at?
Proposing. Yeah, the, the, so there is the one access point off of Cromwell Court, as, as you mentioned, for residents. And then there is currently one and a half stalls per, per apartment unit, which, which matches the zoning requirement.
Okay. The other thing, it just seems like there's a lot of concrete in this layout. I was just wondering if, for each of these apartments, are you looking at any energy savings? Are you looking at making sure that the roof is solar ready? Are you having any electric vehicle stations? Are you doing anything on the sustainability scale?
For sustainability, there'd be the, besides the stormwater aspect of it, the EV stations isn't something that we're looking at now. That is something that's coming in a lot of our multifamily projects. Solar ready for the roof, I would have to talk to our architect about that. I'm not positive, but in general, we're trying to create as flat, plain surface as possible so you can easily configure something like that. And then as far as energy efficiency, one of the biggest things we can do is HVAC and creating efficient HVAC units is probably one of the largest things we can do by using the HVAC and window systems. So those are some of the, the main ones, is windows and HVAC.
You're not looking at, like, looking at good lighting, good water conservation, anything like that too within?
Energy efficient lighting, definitely. As far as water conservation, I would think it's gonna be, besides high efficiency appliances, it would be no recirculation or anything like that, but HE appliances.
So high efficiency appliances and low flow?
Toilets, things like that.
Toilets and showers and stuff like that.
Yeah, thankfully.
Are you going beyond the building codes? Or are you just staying with the current building codes?
A lot of those appliances are kind of industry standards now, which is really helpful. In general, we're complying with building codes.
Okay. But you're not going beyond?
In some areas, we'll go abo, beyond where we can, but we're conforming with building codes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from Alders? Elder Person Peyton?
So I also have a question about parking. On the design, parking is above ground or below ground?
It is surface parking at this time.
It's all, all surface for all units?
It is.
Okay. Has there been a, a thought on underground parking, which would then allow for the opportunity for above-ground green space, which could lead some, to some sustainability initiatives, water conservation, or could be green spaces that are native to Stoughton and the Wisconsin area? That then would kind of raise some of the resolutions to some concerns that may be had around green spaces?
Sure. The, the previous concept plan did include underground parking. One of the reasons we went away from that was in an effort to create affordability within the housing units themselves. Whenever you add things like underground parking, it always increases construction costs in, in an effort to create units that would be, although market rate more affordable, we, we feel that the surface parking is the way to go for this particular site.
Yeah. Because I, I'd also thought, because it was a good point about not only sustainability in terms of the environment and ecology, but also the heat imprint that you'll have with all of the concrete that's gonna be placed for the roads and all of the, the parking. It does help significantly reduce that impact in the area, especially when you're creating so many pieces. So just, although high cost to build, that would be a thought I'd have about how to help reduce the heat because it's getting warmer.
It is. There's also the street, you know, the required plantings of street trees and things like that would help reduce the heat impact.
Elder Person Reeves?
So I noticed that Elder Person Caravelo was voted no. Do you have anything you'd like to share about your concerns?
I did vote no on this at planning. My biggest concern was what, I don't know, I guess I would describe it as odd to me was the ingress egress point, kind of punching through the cul-de-sac at Cromwell Court, punching through, punching, accessing through that bulb at Cromwell Court for this whole development, just struck me as odd and not great planning. So I, I voted no for it based on that.
So, I gotta find it in here. One of the exceptions was, did I see five buildings versus one? So I, maybe that's a question for either you and/or Director Scheel, but I was just, you must have worked that through. I mean, that's significant. Am I reading that right? Five buildings versus one for the exception?
So the flexibilities don't quantify the exact number. What it allows for is more than one building, and the buildings to have more than 12 units per building. So the concept plan, as they've shown, illustrates what would be in place with the number of units per building that they've shown here. This zoning modification doesn't distinguish the exact number of buildings that would be necessary as part of the SIP approval.
It says, I think it says up to five, right?
Correct.
And the, and the reason for that is, is just to allow some flexibility still. I, I highly doubt that we would go to, to say five 20-unit buildings rather than four 24-unit buildings. But for some reason, if, if that allowed for some efficiencies, that would be something we could explore. But I believe four would be the most that we would have.
So this is a, a first reading, and then it'll come back. And if it's approved when it comes back, there's still other steps, right?
Yes. So as I highlighted, the, the one item that's listed here is item three, that it wouldn't become effective until additional parkland has been transferred to the city of Stoughton to match the increased number of units approved for Lot 27. In the event the additional land, option A, preferred option, or adopt, or option B, as shown in exhibit I, cannot be acquired, the common council may consider the collection of fees in lieu of dedication or the dedication of an alternate parcel. So in the packet, and I can get to those, but there's an exhibit I that shows potential locations for parkland dedication.
And then the other step would be the specific implementation plan, which should be something that the Plan Commission would consider, that, that would not come back to the city council, right?
Correct. So on the screen, the, the locations that are identified as potential expansion areas of parkland as A and B, the area that's just north of A and to the east of B was a four-acre parcel that was secured by the city as part of a previous transaction with Kettle Park West. And so it's in city ownership and dedicated for parkland. This river that runs along Oak Opening Drive here, this stretch of land, was part of the original dedication of parkland as part of the Kettle Park West development.
Elder Person Reeves, and then President Hirsch.
So this, this is less a question, but just a thought, and I don't know if this is gonna, should circle back to Finance Committee, but this is gonna affect TIF projections too, presumably. So I guess that would need to be considered as part of the approval process, and I don't know if that happens before we vote on this, but I'd be interested to know about the TIF projections based on this change, if it were approved.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is you want to know what the difference is of value between this proposal and what the convention center may have potentially.
Yep.
Okay?
Please.
Yep. President Hirsch?
Yeah, I have at least one question. When you say market rate, what is the market rate that you're working on and how many two bedrooms? I guess I didn't read that in there. I'm sure it is, but I.
Yeah. Right now, we're looking at rents in the range of a dollar forty cents to a dollar ninety per square foot, in that range. And then the mix right now is approximately 50% one bedrooms, 32% two bedrooms, and then 18% studios. In the two bedrooms, some of them will likely have dens. What we're finding is the two bedroom with the den is a, a bonus space, can perform better than the, the three bedroom because it's much easier for people to scale down than it is to scale up to a larger unit. So if we can provide those bonus spaces, those, those tend to do better than giving that entire extra bedroom. So 50% ones, 30% twos, and 20% studios in that range.
Are you also looking for any workforce housing to be in this area at all?
Just looking at market rate housing, but also trying to make it as affordable as possible. You know, sustainability initiatives have, have been brought up, and often that comes at the cost of rent. So we're trying to balance those things to the greatest extent possible. We're not looking for public assistance at that time, at this time, for, for this project.
Okay.
Elder Person Schumacher?
Connor, can you restate your dollar per square foot? I missed the second part.
Yeah. Right now, we're looking in the range of a dollar forty per square foot to a dollar ninety.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, what is your square footage for like each of those units, so I can kind of figure out what the actual rates are?
Yeah. Oh, and I mean, I could, I guess I could try to list it in that way too, but the, the studios, I believe would be around 800 one bedrooms, 1,000, and then 1,400 for the two bedrooms. I could maybe, I could try to provide additional information on that at the next meeting when we have the more info on the TIF projections as well. So can provide some more information.
Yeah, because I would kind of like the breakdown of what you're considering market rate and where that actually is, because it seems still very high for a studio or apartment. Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. So we have a couple action items to bring back for the second reading, and, and we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Okay, next item, let's see, we're on number 11, which is R 81 of 2023. And this one here also came from Plan Commission. This one is a, is this one a first reading?
I don't think it is.
No, there is, it's, it's a resolution. So this one would be up for action.
Yep. This is R 81 of 2023, a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, conditionally approving the final plat of Magnolia Springs. And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher. Elder Person Caravelo?
And this is just approval of the final plating for the Magnolia Springs subdivision.
Anything you want to highlight, Director Scheel? I know there's representatives available as well.
Yeah. So the, the resolution outlines the requirement to enter into a development agreement. Development agreement has been submitted and presented to the Finance Committee. That will come before, that's not something that has to be acted on prior to the plat. It's a condition of signing the plat, so that the agreements would be acted on at a subsequent council meeting. The plat, I think, is consistent with the, the Plenary Plat Submittal. You'll recognize the, the large corridor where South Page Street is, which is actually a, a big portion of that is a, a stormwater management area in the center of that. That's not itemized as a parcel because it's part of the public right of way. But it's very consistent with the, the Plenary Plat. The zoning is subject to your next actionable item, and I can talk to that specifically at that point. The developer is present if, I think, online if necessary, as well as MSA, their consulting firm.
Anything from the developers team you want to add at this point? Robert or Steve? All right. Hearing none. Now, are there any questions or comments from Alders? This one, I think you've seen a few times, at least most of you. No questions or comments, so. No questions or comments, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. That takes us for the first reading for ordinance 16. Alder Person Caravelo.
All right, this one is a first reading, as you said. This is ordinance 16, 2023, and ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands within the Magnolia Springs development and first reading.
And maybe Rodney, at least, you know, a review for some of us, but for others it might be kind of their first look at the zoning, maybe you can walk us through that.
Yes, thank you. On the screen actually is, there's two ordinances before you. The first one that was just introduced as a first reading is related to what we'll commonly call as the traditional zoning districts, the SR five, the SR six areas that are depicted on the screen here. The next item is related to the planned development district proposal on the lots that are identified as PD or planned development. The PD lots, and I'll just speak to those momentarily because that's your next item on the agenda, they're being proposed with the setbacks to mirror setback requirements of the traditional zoning districts. So you'll see the building envelopes actually shown on the screen or on this illustration. You'll see the buildings, building footprint areas mirror the areas of the traditional zoning districts. So that's part of the reason to go for the PD districts that they've identified on those parcels. The SR five and the SR six are both single-family residential districts. The PDs that are identified are, are all either duplexes and/or townhouse type facilities with two, two units per, per lot or to be split, as you see on the upper part of your screen, lot 1, 2, 3, those are actually half duplexes on separate ownership on each parcel, each half. So lot one would be one owner, lot two would be a separate owner, be one building sharing a common line.
All right, any questions or comments on that before we keep going forward? You guys follow all that? I know it's a lot, but feel free to ask any questions along the way. So that one is a first reading, are we done with that one then?
There'll be, both, both of these would be first readings, but yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next one then. Alder Person Caravelo.
So this one is ordinance 17 of 2023, approving a planned development, general development plan for the Magnolia Springs subdivision.
Anything you want to say on this one or should we just have Rodney?
Rodney can take it away. Well, I certainly tried to illustrate that the request is part of the, the previous item, but the areas that are shown on the map, the PD on this illustration are the areas that are proposed to be zoned planned development and was stated the primary reason for that is to mirror setback requirements of the SR five and SR six districts.
I think what we try to do on these developments is we try to get all the stormwater or the urban service area amendment kind of done as one big plan. And then when we do the plating and the zoning, I think we try to identify, you know, which lots are going to be for which and then typically the developers will do these in phases. So that, that would be kind of my question to Steve or Rob is what do you anticipate the first phase looking like?
Maybe I can highlight that using the illustrated, illustration here, and that'll be more clearly defined as part of the agreements that'll come before the council, but phase one is planned to include Lilac Lane and the east or western edge of Orchard Avenue and then Page Street to the, to the north from that point. Phase one A, if you will, is this area of Orchard Avenue to Fourth Street, and that would be completed by the end of 2025. Phase two and/or subsequent phases would be the balance of the area to the south and extension to Acker Road.
So one A would include the park as well?
One A will include, no, one A includes Page Street and the houses on both sides. The parkland, of course, is dedicated, but it isn't fully improved as part of one A.
All right, President Hirsch.
Rodney, how does the mix of housing in there, does that meet what we, we decided in our comp plan with the amount of?
Yes.
Single family and multifamily?
Well, this planned neighborhood actually has quite a high density of single family. Actually, if you look at, well, I think our comprehensive plan articulates a percentage preferred option as an overall neighborhood. This is part of a bigger neighborhood that's not all developed as well. So all this SR five and SR six are single-family homes and I think this, the PD lots probably assimilate many of the single-family characteristics with a separate ownership of at least half of those, those parcels, like one through, I believe, 18 will actually be a single building with two separate owners.
Is there any apartments?
There are no apartments.
There are no apartments in there?
There are no apartments. This is all one and two-family construction and even the two-family could be separate ownership of that, of that building.
So I thought with planned development that they needed to have kind of multifamily, but that's, you're saying is being done with the side-by-sides?
Plan, planned development is a district, a zoning classification that allows you to establish the standards for that location, that area. It's not just multifamily or it's not just single-family. This allows for the variation of, we call them exceptions or variations to the regulations, whether it's setbacks, density, or otherwise. And this, in this case, there isn't any multifamily being proposed, just the two-family units and single-family units.
Okay.
Alder Person Caravelo.
I, I just have a quick question since you were talking about phasing that regarding the extension of South Page Street down to Acker, that would take place first as, as development or is that something that would also be phased in as far as?
Yes, so phase one and phase one A will include all Page Street from the north boundary down to Orchard Avenue and then connect to South Fourth Street on the eastern edge here. Phase two or subsequent phase will be the extension of Page Street to Acker.
Got it.
All right, any additional questions? Okay, anything from the developers?
Phil, as I noted, from Rodney explained well, is also the exception to not bring back for S I P. This is only two families and we're basically already subdividing the lots and showing the buildings on them, so requesting that, that additional step is not necessary.
Thank you. Okay. And then what is kind of your timeline? I mean, this will be back here at the next council meeting. What are you guys thinking after that if it gets approved?
We are working up the final plans that to provide to staff that should be happening in the next week or so. As noted, the development agreement is, is running its course to be approved. Permitting is going to go in as well real soon here, so the intent is to hopefully break ground on the project this year. Most of the vertical construction is really going to happen, is currently coming to spring on phase one.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So these two items will be back at the next council meeting. If you have any questions between now and then, feel free to reach out to myself or Rodney. We'll be more than happy to, to provide you, you know, answers, so you'll be hopefully prepared to make a vote. All right, item number 14 is the urban service area amendment for U S Highway 51 and B, and this one also came through the Plan Commission. We're busy, weren't we?
Yes. Thank you. This is Resolution 82 of 2023, a resolution finding that the expansion of the Stoughton Urban Service Area to include approximately 276 acres located on the far northwest side of the city, east and west of U S Highway 51, is consistent with the City of Stoughton Comprehensive Plan and directs staff to submit a request for expanding the Stoughton Urban Service Area to include said lands, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peyton. Alder Person Caravelo.
I think after that, I'm just going to let Rodney take this one.
You're out of breath or what?
And I'll just relax for a minute.
So the overall amendment areas depicted on the, the screen in this illustration, you might recall or first, most will, will recall that we actually amended the comprehensive plan for the area to the east of Highway 51. This amendment is, is consistent, or this urban service area amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan amendment for that area as well. That recall, this was the kind of conceptual layout for the area to the east of U S Highway 51 and south of County Highway B. Contained in your packet is conceptual, conceptual illustrations of potential development concepts west of Highway 51. Obviously, the plating and, and zoning for those would have to occur in the future. The urban service area amendment allows us to, we have to apply for this in order to get approval to extend public sanitary sewer into these areas. So you'll, you'll note there's a fair amount of explanation related to utilities in this document as well as how stormwater management in concept would be managed. Stormwater management standards are being held to a standard above what the county requires at this point, and so I think that's something that's, that's noteworthy and it's been, been highlighted by the development team over the course of this project. There's a kettle here that causes us the need to be very mindful of stormwater management and the development team and designers are, are very, very in tune with that and working to strive to, to meet those anticipated requirements for this area. The development team from MSA is here if they have anything else they'd like to add. I'm certainly open to that as well.
Nothing to add unless there's questions to be answered.
Any questions or comments from council members at this point?
I guess I just have one comment on the new parcel on the other side of 51. It seems like there's a lot of proposed multifamily. I mean, I mean, I just hate to think that we are going to look like Cottage Grove soon and that is not a good development over there, so I'm just kind of concerned about multifamily and multifamily, like the ugliness that went on in Cottage Grove recently, so I'm just going to throw that out there as a comment.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, Alder Peyton.
I do think that there may be a bit of a difference between like the two-family houses and multifamily houses there in terms of density and the aesthetic perspective or who we're trying to pull to the city. So I think I would agree, multifamily homes, we tonight have seen a lot of that and have had a lot of other proposals come through, so at least the previous plot is good to see a lot of two-family or duplex townhomes, single-family homes. I thought in one, one of the meetings, there was a discussion about those numbers 46 to 53 were the two-family residences on the north side, right behind the existing residences. There was kind of a, maybe an informal request or a formal request from some of those property owners about having single-family homes behind single-family homes already. Was that considered, discussed?
Yeah, so this is, this doesn't assign a zoning classification to them at this point. This is a planning exhibit that helps us to understand the utility needs that would be necessary here. So that hasn't been an entitlement that's been achieved there at this point.
Yeah, I think, you know, the overall plan, I think what they're trying to do is get through the approval process and then, you know, we'll have a couple more looks at it. And I think, you know, the neighbors would prefer something that's owner-occupied, which could be, you know, a duplex in many cases. I think that's, seems to be the trend right now. And then kind of on the, the west side of the highway, I think, you know, if the stars align, I think what they'd like to be able to do is, you know, potentially run some of the utilities about the same time that the D O T is, is doing roadwork in 2026. We'll see if that happens or not. But having an overall plan for, you know, both sides of the road, I think is, you know, advantageous for us as far as a stormwater management plan. As Rodney mentioned, you know, we're, we're designing these developments for a 200-year flood, which I think will serve us well going forward and that's, you know, it's kind of a sustainability practice as well. When you're doing these stormwater, you know, the downside of that is it really does take up a lot of land and you can see that between the stormwater and the parkland, really how much, you know, it's a big chunk of the land. This is a tax incremental finance district potentially, you know, we're having conversations about that internally, we'll probably be some, having some conversations here as well. And really the trick is, is to find a balance in the density to make these types of developments cash flow. You know, if we did all single-family homes, it probably wouldn't generate as much property tax revenue to pay back all the debt that's incurred. So those are all some of the factors that they're taking into consideration, but I do anticipate we'll have some conversations about that as well. So I, I think will be multiple opportunities to kind of, you know, express our thoughts and, and, you know, make some suggestions on how we can make this, you know, a great development for, for this side of town. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yeah, I, I just have one comment and just want to make sure of something that there is, I guess it's, hold on, whichever one, I guess it would be on this one as well. At number two, that's designated flexible use, that there is indication that there will be the trail corridor that will connect through that spot from that part that's just south of that, what's designated number two. So just as part of that, I see a flexible use as defined up there as commercial, multifamily or mix of both uses, but also wanted to make sure that there's going to be that access through there to extend that trail.
Phil, is that the trail that goes underneath 51? Where is that located on this?
Well, so. Also, it connects, it will connect to the underpass there, but also it's the trail that basically, at, at this point, I think it basically just stops.
So right now it terminates very close to where it's listed as Black Oak Drive or Black Oak in the southern part. Yeah. So the anticipated connection would be through that parcel, that Outlet Six area in some fashion, along or adjacent to that Outlet Six in Wetland. I would anticipate some trail, trail connection through there as well.
Just making sure.
So if it goes through there, then where is the underpass to 51? Is that Outlet Four or?
It's near Outlet Five.
Yeah, but there's another one up there. Okay, that one, not the one up further north.
Yeah, it's Outlet Four or Five, which is just north of the flexible use area. Again, these lots haven't been delineated. We're trying to illustrate a concept plan, but particularly related to the stormwater management and utility delivery for these areas. Good. These are good questions.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so this one here, we have a, a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, we should be able to pick up the pace now. Item number 15 from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Am I going too slow for you?
No, I am.
Okay, this is Resolution 83 of 2023, approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional. Okay, this is Resolution 83 of 2023, approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional land division for property located at 3065 Sam Miles Road, Town of Dunkirk, Dink County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is in our ETJ boundary, which if folks have, new folks have questions about that, I'm sure Rodney could enlighten us, is to, this is proposed to separate existing residents from the agricultural lands that it is currently part of.
These ETJs, we're a fourth-class city, so under that designation, we have, say, within a mile and a half of our borders. The amount of, say, we have is fairly limited according to the city attorney, but as part of the approval process, we do get a look at it, so does the township, and I think maybe even the county as well. Typically, what we see is maybe they're building, you know, a home for the parents near the farm, or they want to put up a shed or something like that, is typically what they are. Am I missing anything?
I should just highlight, we, we look at how close they are really to the current city limits or our long-range planning boundary. This is nearly outside of our ETJ area as it, as it, as it is, so it's not within our long-term planning boundary, so it doesn't present any urban development concerns about challenges. Where we would become concerned or more interested is if there's a subdivision proposed very close to our borders, what that looks like and how that would be designed to be incorporated into the urban character that we, we have generated around our community.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item, 16, this one here would have normally have gone through Public Safety. There was a little bit of a communication breakdown when the application was submitted to reserve the park, so the alcohol portion of it did not go through the committee, but it did get reviewed by the clerk as well as the, the police chief, and as far as I know, and you can help me out, Candy, there were no issues with the application.
There are no issues.
And the chief is nodding his head, there's thumbs up from the chief as well. So this is for the annual Taste of Stoughton. One thing I will share is, before the pandemic, one of the things we talked about, and we actually had meetings, back then we had a different clerk and a different police chief, was to try to have a more streamlined application process, so to try to prevent this from happening. Because in an event like this, they have to go reserve the park, there's an application for that, they have to get the alcohol permit, there's an application for that, that needs to be reviewed by two people and the committee, and then in some cases, if we close a road, there's a process that goes through Public Works to do that. So there's all these different, you know, applications that need to be completed depending on the event, and what we'd like to do is at least have one application with some sort of exhibits and color-coded or whatever to make it easier for the participants to fill out. So we're gonna reconvene and try to pick up where we left off. So that's kind of a, a side note, and then at some point, we'll probably bring them forward for approval, but, so this one here is an annual event, we haven't had any problems in the past, it's a good family event for anyone that hasn't attended, and we just asked to kind of run it through tonight, because otherwise, the committee doesn't meet until tomorrow night, and it wouldn't come back to the council until four days before the event, and they want to make sure that they have time to market it and understand for sure whether or not they're gonna be able to have, you know, alcohol there. So, that's why it's here tonight, so at this point, I would entertain a motion if somebody would make that, that would be awesome. Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Would you like me to read the resolution?
If you wish, sure. R 84.
Okay, well, Resolution 84, 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine retailer's license for, and special event license for Taste of Stoughton, and I'd move for approval.
Second by Peyton, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next three items are first readings from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen. Throw your mic on there. Look for the red light.
Ordinance 18, 2013, that can't be right. Could be 2023 on the, yeah. Okay, ordinance 18 of 2023, amending ordinance chapter 70 dash 135, parent B, by creating section C, senior center parking only, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. stalls to be designated in the area on the north side of the senior center, and this is first reading.
All right, so basically, we're asking for two hours of space in front of the senior center to accommodate the, or not. Oh, see, I missed part of that meeting, that's what happens.
Yeah, put your mic on.
It's on. You got it.
So, the idea is to restrict the parking lots behind the senior center to senior center users only. Right now, they're open.
Open.
Director McGlynn brought this to my attentions, she cited not only convenience for users of the senior center, but also for their safety. She's concerned about parking on Main Street on both sides, particularly the south side, trying to walk across. She reports to me that there is, like, some of the neighbors park there occasionally. Concern was, with as busy as it is, they need every parking spot they can muster. So that was the idea, just to label it as senior center users only during the day.
All right, thanks for clarifying that for me. Any questions or comments on this one?
A question, on this diagram, you have 1, 2, 3, and 4, what does that all mean?
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. The ordinance itself would cover areas 1, 2, and 3. Originally, 4 was brought in after conversations at Public Safety with Alder Jensen and Alder Peyton. We talked about there is a park there, and the idea was to allow that to be open for community use during the day.
So it's just the three?
Just the three.
And those are all owned by the senior center, and they're all marked?
They're all marked parking stalls, they're not designated as such for senior only, and that's what this ordinance would, in fact, do.
And so, so from like 5:00 p.m. until 8:00, 8:00 a.m.?
8 till 4, 4:30.
8 to 4:30?
Yeah.
Yep, so what happens after 4:30?
It's open up to anyone.
That's your question?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, this will be back in two weeks. Next one is ordinance 19.
Thank you, Your Honor, ordinance 19 of 2023, to amend chapter 70 dash 322, designated, designated state speed limits on certain streets to include established, excuse me, establish a 25 mile per hour speed restriction on Racetrack Road, Highway 51, to County Road A East Academy.
Okay, this one I can even figure out.
That's first reading.
This one was a request that came in from Town of Dunkirk. It is weight restricted, but it's kind of a straight shot going into zinc power, so people tend to, you know, apparently they're in a hurry to get to work, or they're in a hurry to leave work, so we're, we're trying to work with the township, and I know Rodney has, has communicated that we do have some future road construction planned here, so there's some things we can do at that point as well to try to slow down the speed. Anything from your perspective on this one, Chief?
It is a busy area, the park, the continued development on the east side, we get more and more complaints. I included one, it's typical that, hey, I'm out walking, and it just seems like the cars are going by too fast. Lowering the speed limit, we thought, might kind of help with the truck traffic a little, perhaps.
Yeah, we also, in the past, we've tried to eliminate what I'll call the street parking, and, and get everyone into the parking lot. That seems to be working out pretty well there, we were having people that were parking just off the road there diagonally, and then backing up, and the neighbors communicated they felt was unsafe, so I think they have a pretty good sense of, you know, what's going on down there.
And you mentioned the Town of Dunkirk, it is a shared roadway, and the town intends on changing their speed limit to 25 on their portion, so it would align with theirs.
Yeah, do we share the sign then, or what happens there?
We need new signs, no doubt.
Right on.
Any questions on this one? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the next one, item 19, which is ordinance 20, if I can find it here, Alder Person Jensen.
I was trying to be courteous and turn it off.
We're gonna set up the border jar.
Ordinance 20 of 23, create chapter 70 dash 203 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code prohibiting overnight parking from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and/or no motor truck, tractor, trailer, semi-trailer, or cabin trailer used in connection where they're in, or they're with, they're with, what is that? Okay, there and with an overall length of 17 feet or more, and this is first reading.
I have a question with this.
I have the question, I couldn't, yeah.
How are you gonna fit that all on a sign?
Yeah. What does that mean?
I mean, it's just gonna keep going and going and going, I mean, it's just, not.
I think it's just gonna be no parking.
Well, yeah, I mean, could it just be, well, no, because the whole reason is, is that people want to park there to use the trail.
Yeah, that's what, so one location, it is to access the trailhead, that was brought by Rivers and Trail Task Force through Public Works, they, there's users that wanted to use Progress Lane, and there's no place to park. It's no parking both sides. So this would allow daytime traffic, or park, or cars to park there and access the trails, and then prohibit truck parking throughout the day, and no cars overnight.
You may need two signs.
I hope not.
Rodney, you have something?
I was just gonna highlight, the aerial photograph probably has the Google name incorrect there, it's actually Progress Lane, they show it as Progress Way, but it's planted as Progress Lane, and, and I know that you might want to just change that as part of the, the ordinance here as well.
All right, did you catch that, Candy?
Yes, I have it.
Awesome, all right, thank you, Rodney.
Chief, while we have you up here, is there, for that area, is there a number of trucks that park there during the day, because I know, because of the hours that they can actually drive, is that a need in the city to have a designated couple of stalls for truck drivers to be able to rest in between their shifts? I mean, I don't want to, you know, take away, you know, if this is a business and they don't have enough parking space, I mean, what is the problem, and how do we solve it?
Well, one issue there was, there was some construction equipment being left there for some time, and that was the idea there, and then to clean up from those trailers, it came, like, Public Works as well for plowing, for maintenance, those types of things, we wanted to eliminate any overnight or long-term parking of that heavy equipment.
So there isn't, like, semis or other truck drivers that are just parking there to rest during the day, it's more that the equipment is being left there?
Yeah, just the equipment being left there. The city does have, well, on the east side of Matt Park, a designated area where you can stop and park and sleep in your cab if need be.
All right, any other questions on this one? Otherwise, these will all be back at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to the getting of the meeting here quick, because we do have somebody here that wanted to, that came that wants to go through and listen to the, to public hearing part, and then we'll finish up those items, and then we'll get back, we still have to do utilities audit here at the end. So, we did have a public, a public hearing scheduled, and we're gonna do that now, and that's for the street projects, so we would close our regular meeting and then reopen for the public hearing. Now, there was, nobody signed up, you didn't want to sign up and speak, did you, sir? Okay, so nobody has signed up to speak, so we would close the public hearing then, and then we'll reopen for that business item, and that one was coming from R 79, so it's actually item number eight, and that one came from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R 79 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property in the City of Stoughton for the improvement of curb and gutter, sidewalks, driveway aprons, and carriage walks for 2023 projects. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Schumacher.
This is, along with the construction projects, the, for the replacement of those items highlighted in the header of this, and within this document are also the streets that would be affected by that.
Hey, girl.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Schill?
I, I think I can just highlight the fact that we've put the, the special assessment schedule together based on the ordinances and the policies. Fifty percent of the cost for curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk replacement, 100% is allocable to property owners for the aprons and any carriage walks that are replaced. Noteworthy is North Street, any preliminary assessments that would be associated with that are not applicable now, because that has been harvested out of this year's project. But we've been fielding calls for individuals related to this, and we've, we've been trying to address those on a case-by-case basis, but remaining consistent with our policy related to those assessment practices.
All right, any questions or comments on this?
Rodney, where is, didn't we just approve something for Bickley Court? Is that gonna be part of these assessments? Is that in one of those?
They are in there. They're, they're not enumerated in the resolution title, but could be, or could be added to that, they are in the special assessment schedule.
Right, but the, the list of all the roads doesn't include that?
It would be appropriate to add that to the list.
Okay, so we could amend it and add that to the list?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good catch.
Do we need a motion to do that?
I think that'd be cleanest.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to add Bickley Court to the lists of improvement for curb and gutter and sidewalks.
All right, so there's a motion to amend, and a second by Jensen, did you catch that, Candy?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. So that takes us back to the resolution as amended, so it'll now include Bickley Court. Any more discussion on that? Rodney, are you in a position to give us an update on the road construction?
I'm sure. So the main focus of the project, we have several projects that are under, or will be underway, the one that started is our pulverization project, Robey Road. Most of the activity on Robey Road really was associated with a sanitary sewer upgrade as part of the 51 West development between Virgin Lake Drive and Kingsland Road. Most of that sanitary work is completed, so now the, the pulverization project contractor is moving in to do spot replacement of curb and gutter and sidewalk on Robey, and the other lists of streets for. and the other lists of streets related to the pulverization project. We are working to have Robey Road be surface paved prior to Jackson Street being unavailable for traffic. That doesn't mean there might not be traffic by that contractor working on Jackson Street primarily on Olson Court and/or Kensington Square or the adjacent curb and gutter sidewalk removals while traffic could still be on that roadway. We don't want to have both Robey Road and Jackson Street closed to traffic, through traffic, at the same time. So that's what we're trying to work through. The second contract related to the Jackson Street, Olson Court and Kensington Square, we still have a neighborhood meeting that we'll coordinate coming up in about two weeks with those affected property owners. And so we invite those property owners to attend a meeting. Yet to be determined the time and date, but probably about two weeks out from now. So construction on that aspect of the project will probably start in the middle of June, and the... Both projects will be completed about by the time school starts. The school project has a major Devonshire Road and some streets in the back part of the high school area that are being completed. They can't start work on those until after school is actually complete for the season.
Yeah, I did have a communication with the school district today at the lunch and learn, and one of the concerns they raised is they do have summer school programming at the high school, and I don't know if you're in communication with them about the back parking lot, but they raised... I don't know if I'll call it a concern, but they wanted to know that with all the other construction they have going on, they may have more traffic than normal at the high school. And I want to say beginning June 12th, if I remember right. So, you know, we might want to reach out to them and make sure everybody kind of understands where we're at. Or maybe you'll get an email tomorrow from them, but I want to at least give you a heads up on that.
Yeah, they might have to utilize a direct crossing at Buckingham, for example. There will be work at a time where that won't be accessible. Also, I know that when we did Lincoln and Jackson Street adjacent to the school, there's other arrangements that were made, and I think sometimes they were able to utilize the corridor on the north side of their building for some activities. So hopefully, they have some alternatives as well for those periods.
All right, can't say I didn't give you a heads up. Any questions or comments on this? So we have the motion as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right. Yeah, we'll do the Stoughton Utilities. We'll try to get her out of here. She's been waiting so patiently. So item number 20 is the Audit Report and Management Letter, and then... No, we voted on the amendment.
We voted on the amendment right away.
Yep, we got them. It's all right. Thanks for checking up on me.
It's okay.
Not a big deal. So R 85 and then R 86 are kind of the two items from Utilities, so they both came from the committee. And who am I supposed to ask to introduce that? It's you. All right, so you can introduce R 85. I'll get it up on the screen if you don't have it in front of you.
Sure, ready to do work. So Resolution 85 2023 from the Stoughton Utilities, Utilities Committee. Did I do the small reading right? Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to acknowledge receipt of the Stoughton Utilities 2022 Audit Report and Management Letter.
And I so move.
And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Anything you want to highlight, or you want to turn it over? Shannon's here from Utilities, so she can...
Yeah, absolutely. Shannon, if you'd like to speak. It sounds like all positive stuff from our meeting.
It was. We had another successful audit. I'll just review the highlights that Megan presented at the Utilities Committee meeting. For the electric utility, we are meeting the authorized rate of return is 4.9% from our last rate case. In '22, we did meet that. Just to note, the PSC is authorizing a higher rate of return. They've increased that up to about 7% now. As you know, we're in for our electric rate case, so we're hoping to increase up to the 7% from the 4.9. But we have end of the year, five months cash on hand, which is our target for all three of our utilities. And then we're meeting our debt coverage. We're required to have 1.3 months on hand. We have the 3.3, so we're well above that as well. Water utility also looking good for the end of 2022. As you recall, we did close on our debt issuance for our lead service line replacement in '22, which helped our cash on hand. In '21, we received about two and a half months with that debt issuance in 2022. Reimbursed ourselves, and we were bounced back up to about nine months cash on hand, which we will need for future projects moving forward here, so that's good for us. And then also meeting the debt coverage also in the water utility. Required the 1.3. We have two months, so we're doing there good as well. And then also good news on the sewer. Last page, we ended '22 with about six months cash on hand, and then, as you recall, they don't have a rate of return for the sewer, so that's not listed here. But the debt coverage, we're about double. Required 1.1. We were sitting a little over two months cash... Two months coverage sitting at year-end. But overall, it was a good audit. It was a lot easier having the full year in than my first audit, which was only a couple months, so it was successful. Everything went well. I don't know if anyone has anything else to add. It was at the committee meeting that Megan may have mentioned, but otherwise, we passed with flying colors.
Awesome. Thanks for being here. And I would just add, so the action is to basically accept the report. We're not approving it because we don't actually do the work, but we are accepting the report as it's drafted. Director Weiss is on as well. Did you have anything you want to add, Jill?
I really don't, but I just would like to highlight the great job that Shannon's done to put us in a good position to have such a successful audit, so...
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. I skipped over something here. Next item is R 86. There we go. And this one here also came from Utilities, or Alder Peyton.
Yeah, Part 2. So Resolution 86 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utilities 2022 Wastewater Treatment Facility and Sanitary Sewer Collection System Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, or CMAR. So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravella. Nicely done. Anything you want to... You want to comment? I hear him.
I'd also invite Shannon up if she has anything else she'd like to include on here, but it seemed pretty good, the report. If you look at the end of the document for the CMAR, there is typically like a report card, and we do really well in all of the areas that are reported back to us. So it looked really great.
You want to comment, or just Jill, or both?
Yep, I believe Director Weiss is on virtual for comment.
Let me find it here without making you dizzy, so I'll be right back with it. What am I looking for?
Did you want to put up the report card?
Yeah, he said it was at the end, right?
Yeah, there's a... It's a grading summary. It's the second-to-last sheet of the report itself.
I see it. All right, I'll get it up here for you.
I think the one nice thing is this is our annual opportunity to really take a look at everything related to our wastewater treatment plant as well as our collection system, really the utility as a whole. We typically have high marks in all areas except for affluent, and that really comes down to how our plant is rated. A few things, actually, with that. Something that we're taking the opportunity to look at a little bit closer with the urban service area amendments that we continue to have come in. We're also seeing some of our industries actually reducing the strength of their waste as well as their volumes. We're continuing to watch that very closely and looking at plant upgrades potentially for capacity, but also really more from end-of-useful life. We're getting to a point where there's a number of things within the plant itself that needs to be addressed, and so we're looking at pulling together in probably the next five years or so, a plant upgrade project that we look to move forward with. But the D that we receive, and sometimes we actually have received an F in that area when we're in years where we have really a lot of rain. Basically, we've got a lot of clay pipes in our collection system, and so we get a lot of I and I. So it's an opportunity for us, but again, it's more to do with really how our plant is rated because as we've got, as you go down from there, the marks related to our treatment are really great. That says that, you know, our plant is able to take on all of that capacity, all of that strength of waste, actually treat it very effectively. We did get a B this year in phosphorus. We have two digesters, and we clean those every five years. We take them down, do a full cleaning. What we found in the May cleaning is that we should have had alum on hand, a chemical basically that we can add to our process that will sequester the phosphorus. We didn't have that on site. We thought we had it under control, and so there was a few times in May that we actually did exceed our limits for phosphorus. We did the exact same thing in September and took down the other digester, but in that case, we did have the alum on hand, and we were able to meet all of our numbers. Something we've learned for the future, make sure that we've always got that chemical on hand in case we do need to add it to meet our phosphorus numbers. Few other things is our bio-salads and the sludge ultimately that we actually store. And then twice a year, if we have the opportunity, we take that out to the farm fields and it's injected. We've got good... We're dealing with that well. It's always an opportunity a little bit for us and something we continue to watch as if we have very wet years, hard to get out into the farm fields, and so it's an opportunity to kind of address whether do we need more storage? Do we need to look at additional farm fields? Do we need to look at greater control for those staffing? And really our preventative maintenance and how we've trained our staff and how we're really increasing their knowledge also kind of goes with our certifications and making sure that our employees are all certified and that we have good staffing. Financial, that of course Shannon helps us with, and make sure that we're in good financial standing, and then taking a look at our collection system. Again, we're doing great maintenance with our collection system. There's always opportunities there as well. We have a lot of clay pipes, and so when we have the opportunity, we look to actually replace those on a systematic basis and try to follow city with the same project at the same time. I do have to say that I think in the next 10 years, there is a fair amount of projects that we have planned. We have all of the work that we plan to do on US 51, both water and sewer. We have now some plant upgrades that we're looking at to address kind of the end-of-useful life as well as the overall capacity of the plant. So there is some financial things that we really need to consider and plan out for the future, but overall, good marks and happy to report that a report card looks good this year again. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of the information that's been provided.
Alder Person, Schumacher.
Jill, do you know if, out in the future, because we had the issue with the phosphorus this year, that if... Are those regulations set to tighten up in '24 or '25?
Right now, no, because they just tightened up for us. We actually were at 1, and we've now dropped to 0.6. We've got some time. They will continue over time as they reissue our permit. We will have continuing reductions there. We're fairly, you know, we're in a good place with our plant from a treatment standpoint. If, as they continue to reduce those numbers and we have to have a higher level of treatment, we do know that our... The alum treatment that we can use does work very well for us. We often don't inject chemical if we don't have to, but when we do, we do have a good phosphorus sequestering into the sludge, and so we haven't had any issues there as long as we maintain that chemical on hand. So we feel comfortable in time as those, you know, numbers continue to go down, we'll continue to be able to meet them.
And then that alum treatment for that, is that... So that sequesters the phosphorus and then it's just released in affluent?
That... It's ultimately released in our sludge, so then we're able to sequester it into the sludge, and then the farmers are able to use that on their fields.
Got it, thanks.
Good question.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person, Caravella.
I just have one quick question, since PFOS has been a subject for, it seems like, the last few years in particular. If there is anything in our treatment or collection or filtration or even since you referenced the sludge that goes to farm fields, how do we address PFOS? Or do we address PFOS, or what happens there as far as that goes?
Right now, we don't have regulation that specifically is addressing the PFOS forest, but it's something that we're watching very closely. And DNR actually came in and did a test, I think in February of '21, to take a look at basically our, you know, what we're ultimately discharging to the river and see exactly what the PFOS numbers were there. Very, very, very low. But internally, we started to discuss exactly what we need to do as far as from a sludge standpoint, and we do plan this year to do some PFOS testing of the sludge itself. We have heard different reports of different situations where that has been a concern. We're talking with MSD. They have actually said they've had a few farmers comment on it, concerned about it to some degree, but have found that the nutrients, you know, outweighs that concern. So they've not had, at least when we met with them about a year ago, they weren't having any farmers at this point in time saying they wouldn't take their waste. However, because PFOS is what it is, it's a forever chemical, we do plan to actually do some sludge testing to understand exactly what we've got for levels. We are hopeful, and I guess believe at this point in time, based on our sampling we've done, you know, at the plant itself and then also at our wells, that we may be just fine. We found that our wells, actually, three of the wells have zero, so basically no detect at all. And one of our wells has a very slight detect of PFOS. So again, it's something we're watching very, very closely, and we'll continue to report out as we know more.
Yeah, I would just add, there is some money that has been discussed as part of the state budget process, but at this point, I think they kind of have a number in mind, but how it would be allocated is pretty undefined, I guess I would say, at least I haven't seen it. But I know that we're starting to get bipartisan communications going on this issue, which I think is encouraging. It's been really kind of swept under the rug for years, and I think that people are realizing, not only from the Utilities, but even, you know, firefighters and, you know, even kitchen appliances, you know, and waterways all contain the materials. So I think it's kind of the big elephant in the room really how to go about and prioritize how we begin to address this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. And we're watching that money as well. The one thing that we found kind of on the water side is that there's not necessarily an effective treatment that we've found to be, again, it's a forever chemical, so you're just kind of passing it through. If you're able to take it out of the water, well, what do you do with it? Next step, kind of things there. We don't leave right now with levels that we have at the one well that's been detected that we would actually be eligible for those monies that it may be available coming is another reason in which we also want to take a look at our sludge and make sure where we're at number-wise there and see if there's an opportunity for additional treatment at the plant to be addressed.
Alder Person, Schumacher.
I'll say that the PFOS are... They're easy to analyze, but they're notoriously difficult to sample properly, to get a real sample in there because they're such ubiquitous chemicals that when you're actually taking the sample, you have to be careful that you're not accidentally contaminating it with what you're sampling it with so that you can actually get a real number out of it.
We've heard the same, even to the point of the deodorants you use and different things. So actually, when we did our sampling at our wells, the person taking the samples basically tried to kind of sequester themselves from away from any kind of use of any, you know, even so much as like the paper with your burger comes on from McDonald's potentially has PFOS so that, you know, it doesn't overly stick to it. So he really tried to go through some efforts to make sure that he, you know, took some time and tried to avoid any kind of PFOS chemicals that he could, you know, essentially unintentionally add PFOS for our samples just through his own use of different products in his own home.
It is really scary how ubiquitous the chemicals are.
I have a motion on the table, and all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. I believe we have like two more items here. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Shannon. Yep, safe travels. Item number six was the second reading, ordinance 14. This one came from the Committee of the Whole, so I would...
Public safety.
Huh?
Public safety committee.
Public safety and Committee of the Whole. Who wants... You want to introduce it? Go ahead.
Yeah, public safety. Let's see. Well, that's... Ordinance 14 of 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to issuance of alcohol... Chapter 14 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to issuance of alcohol beverage operators license, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Jensen.
Yep, you've all seen this on numerous times, everything's in the packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
All right. Anything you want to add, Attorney Dragney? You've been so quiet all night.
Yeah, no, nothing to add. As Alder Jensen said, this has been before the council on several occasions, so I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. And then for those of you that haven't been on here as long, so we basically did like three things. We changed our policy for a bartender's license, basically is what we call an operator license. So the way it's going to be now, as approved, somebody applies for an operator's license, we do a background check, if it's clear, boom, the clerk approves it, no issues. If there's something on the background check that meets the criteria here, then the public safety would look at it and see if it's substantially related to serving alcohol at an establishment. If they determine it is, then the second part of that is they would make a determination of whether or not the applicant is seek rehabilitation, that's defined in here. If the applicant has secret rehabilitation, then the committee could approve the license. I think that's it in a nutshell.
That's a nutshell.
But it took us many hours and many meetings to get to this language that we have here. So it was a huge undertaking by Matt and his team, by the public safety committee, and the committee of the whole. Am I missing anything, Matt? I know I kind of oversimplified it.
One important element is that under the existing ordinance, the public safety committee serves simply as an advisory or recommending body to the city council, and then their recommendation would go to the council, and then the council would make the final decision. Under the proposed ordinance, the public safety committee would make the final decision.
And that would be quasi judicial?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Which basically means that there would be evidence presented by the applicant, and then, you know, by, you know, the chief would probably show his report, and then it would almost be like the judge and jury. We hope it doesn't come down to that, but at least now we have a process that we feel is clear and consistent and fair, whereas before, it felt a little subjective at times, I guess is the best way to put it. So we think this is a better process, and we appreciate the city attorney making us aware of the change in the state law that kind of prompted this whole discussion. Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, it, what it does is it, it makes it more defendable in court if, if it was challenged.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any, and any opposed? None opposed, that carries, and then the resolution kind of goes with it, that's why they're both here tonight. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 77-2023, repealing and recreating the policy regarding the issuance of alcohol beverage operators license, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second by, was that Legaki?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, this go hand, it goes hand in hand with the ordinance change, it covers all of the, what you had alluded to with your comments. So it changes how the chief works with it and with how Candy works with the policy and how the committee works with the policy. So it's, it's something that streamlines the whole process.
Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Reeves.
I want to say thank you for taking out the thing about the oral...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, you're probably going to see more of that. I know I ran into something a couple of weeks ago when we were following up about dance clubs and those sort of things. There's some language in one of the Chapter 14 or whatever it is. So I think what you're going to hear is, as we get closer to budget time, we're going to talk about our ordinances and maybe try to come up with a path to get them modernized, all of them, which is a huge undertaking. Rodney's, he doesn't want to look at me when I say that. Because a lot of it is in the zoning, but it's kind of the necessary evil, and it's getting to a point where I think we're going to have to just break down and do it, but certainly those type of improvements will be made along the way.
Well, it also might be a recommendation from the DEI. I mean, a lot of the language use are probably not suitable or current.
Yep, we need to get into the 21st century.
Maybe in the 20th.
Yeah. All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? None opposed.
Go to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, a second by Caravella. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks for coming along for the ride tonight. We're adjourned.